Anytime you are.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna open this meeting of the Nottingham Board of Selectment for Monday, January 13th, 2020. And before we begin, if you can all rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have some more to. Thank you. All right. First item, manifests.
Make the motion that we approve accounts payable manifest of January 13th, 2020, and the payroll manifest of January 14th, 2020.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous? Square on chairs?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Minutes, I don't, I actually think we should hold off on the minutes until everybody's here.
Okay.
Unless you guys wanna proceed. No, this is it. This is it. Action items from last meeting, I don't believe there were any. Other than our homework on...
Town report.
Town report. Yep. Dedication and the... I have the draft of the Select Board summary that I'm gonna...
Pass around?
Yeah, I've already started working on it, so... All right. Signed boards and committees. Budget? Anything going on budget? Who's doing budget?
Deb Ben.
Abbott.
Yeah, they just had a meeting, but I wasn't there, so...
Yeah, they met last Thursday, did the second draft of the town budget.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
No... No major questions?
No, a couple of questions, but no major concerns.
Okay. Planning board?
The planning board, I got a after report for everybody that I'll be, but that was only a draft, but there wasn't really too, too much at our last meeting. That's been an extension.
Anything on Marston? Or, they're done for the season, right?
Just waiting here on one grant application. Pending.
And Donna's on CIP, right?
CIP, finally, the weather allowed us to meet last week, we'll have, we have a couple of small tweaks to report, and that'll be out to the members to come back to the boards probably tomorrow.
Okay. And 300th, who's... Is Donna wrangling that one, too?
I haven't heard anything.
Nothing lately.
Hopefully, we will have on February 23rd, a Thursday, a Wednesday night at the library, a person who's in Nottingham, who runs the gendals, talking about the gendals, you know, responsible for 300, and they espel society.
Cool. Flat-bottom riverboats. Okay. All right, town administrators' report.
Just a handful of things I'm not sure we've covered here, you may have heard it directly or indirectly. The... You authorized the tax deed-ing of two properties a couple of months ago, and had two more that pending inspections were going to go to tax deed. The two, the first two, the tax collector's working on finalizing that paper trail. Close on one, the other one's a little sticky. The other two that we were going to inspect before tax deed-ing have both come forward to pay the full amounts due, so they're off the list. And we have no reason to take those two properties, so... It was a good, a good year overall for collecting unpaid back taxes. And another case that's been kinda tripping along on 202 is, I think, about to go on the market, which was part of the plan to sell that, pay the back taxes, and so generally good news there.
That property on the lake?
Yeah, across the street from the lake, yep.
Right.
A couple, three meetings ago, you approved the sale of a tax-deeded property on the corner of Freeman Hall Road. We did a bid process, the buyer has backed out of that after trying to do a title search. It was our only bidder, so we really don't have any fallback there. So that property just stays in our hands until you wanna do something with it again. Let's see, town report dedication, I still have to talk, we're gonna do that one-on-one, so if you have any thoughts on that, get to me sooner rather than later. Got mail from the DRA today with our 2019 sales ratio, assessment ratio of how far below the market we are, we're at 82.5% for 2019, so on average, our assessments are about 20% lower than the market value, that's the trend we've been seeing, we just now have a new number for last year. Coming into revale, that would tell us that the typical property's assessed value is probably gonna go up by 20 to 25%, so that's where we sit. I hope to get a little more breakdown from Avatar on either what types of properties or what locations of properties that really affects more than others, nothing jumped out at me, but, so I think it's gonna be pretty widespread. And lastly, Chief Vilchuck was re-elected by the members at the fire department last week, so he will be chief for another year.
Good.
And that's all I have. Yeah, if you wanna, you've got a copy of a performance evaluation and a merit increase there, if you wanna sign that, you did, uh... Manifest, right?
Oh, website and...
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you?
It's all for you.
All right, general business. We have a cable franchise fund request. Where is that?
That's in your package there.
Okay.
We talked about the cable franchise fund a couple of months ago, school had part one of a request, this is part two.
Yep. This is for the microphones and speakers?
Yep.
Okay. You guys have any questions on this? If not, I'll take a motion.
What do you have the motion to say?
It's at the, the proposed motion language at the bottom of the paragraph.
Oh, okay, I gotcha, sorry. I'll make a motion, the board approves the expenditure of up to $12,972 for the cable fund for replacement of the audio, the school audio equipment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous? Primary election planning.
All right, so the election officials have been busy getting ready, the, I think you got some email over the weekend on scheduling.
Training.
Oh, that was on training?
Yeah.
Okay, so the only two open questions that we really have, you got a request from the moderator to provide lunch, last time we talked about that, we said, let's throw it out to the community and see if anybody was, anybody's willing to do that, they didn't find anybody that was willing to do that as a fundraiser or service project, anything like that, so you have an email from the moderator requesting that we provide lunch for the election workers on February 11th. Know where you wanna proceed on that.
Well, we need to know what and how much.
What did she, she kind of punted on that, it's on... Second page of that.
Of this?
I think, I think we, I think we were at like 400 last time we did it. And that was in, uh...
Oh, that's the classes.
That was a smaller election, we'll probably have more people this time working, so... Lacking in a specific request, I'd say 500 bucks. If you wanna go that way. You talked about it quite a bit.
Yeah.
When they were all here, so...
What do you guys think? We had a discussion a while back about feeding the election workers. Would this, would this expenditure just be for the primary?
Yeah, town meeting Saturday, the Saturday town meeting, I believe, is covered. Somebody's gonna do that, I don't think we have Tuesday covered for town meeting elections. How many people are gonna be at the election working? Forty? Probably, yeah.
About that?
Yep. Yeah, I, I believe the thinking was, you know, coffee and pastries in the morning and some kind of lunch that would last through the afternoon, depending on shifts and...
Yeah.
That kinda thing.
I'm good with it.
I don't have any problem, I mean, it's...
It's a thankless job, we should be happy as people are coming to do it.
And it's, it's hard to find people to work it, and it's a long day, you know? And we'll know, we'll be there, too. But I, I don't, I don't have any problem taking care of the people that show up to work the elections.
Are you?
In this, in this one small way, so...
Make a motion, we feed the election workers, election day?
A little more specific, we'll spend, spend 500 bucks.
Up to.
Up to 500 bucks, yeah, yeah.
Right.
I'll take a motion to that effect.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we spend up to $500 to feed the people working the election. Second that.
We have a motion and a second, in favor? All right, it's unanimous. All right, well, they're done. 2020 budget.
Okay, you have the latest draft, this is the same one that went to the Budget Committee on Thursday, generally feeling better about things in the first draft. I don't know what you wanna do detail-wise, but I'll talk you through what's, the big pieces that are different in the operating budget, and then the, the big picture, including revenues. The operating budget is up, I think we're at 6% right now, the changes that you, or the decisions that you made at the last meeting in December, where you were able to shave some things off there. We got through our open enrollment with that new health insurance option, that saved around 20 grand, I think, budget-wise, yep. We've pulled some small equipment purchases we were able to make in December out of there. The heat for the highway garage, the heating system for the highway garage has come out because we did that in December. So that's where we, those are the big changes on the expense side, and then some lesser changes related to the retirement in the police department, we know we're gonna have a gap there, we're gonna have some payout of earned, earned time that we have to budget for. Overall, that'll be a money saver, we, we pulled some back there, we're not really sure when that position's gonna be filled, so it's tough to, tough to budget for, but... The unknowns that we have left are the testing requirements for PFAS around the landfill, we're still going back and forth with DES on what they're gonna require there, and waiting on year-end billing and usage and stuff for the recycling center materials, disposal and hauling costs, and a couple utility lines, we'll go back and tweak those, they won't move dramatically, but those are the, the bigger unknowns. And the, and let me, let me skip ahead and come back to one other unknown. So we came out of December with a full-year revenue picture, I gave you a, let's see what it looks like here, it's at the back, I think, of your, um, your latest printed version. Some generally good news on revenues, when you get to the end of the year and you add up everything you know is coming, it really helped take the edge off the budget increase. If you look at, almost at the back of the stapled package, you have something that looks like this.
Yep.
So this is a breakdown of all the revenue accounts, when we hand them off to DRA, we end up consolidating a bunch of it, but this is a way to show you details. The big movers continue to be, well, most importantly, motor vehicle tax, that's the motor vehicle registration fees, that has been climbing consistently, well, since the end of the recession, really, like 100,000 a year kind of climb, it's just remarkable. But, so that's, you see that on, in the middle of the first white section, at, this year, 1.124 million, we were expecting just under a million, so 130,000 in revenue we didn't budget for, we always are conservative in these revenue budgets. You know, we, we always expect a little bit more, but this was even more than we, off the record, expected, I think. So that, that, anticipating more revenue on that line next year to catch up to reality, provides some added revenue. Couple other areas, interest income, which I think is on the second page, with our new bank, we, we switched banks last year, the treasurer moved us from one bank to another for almost all of our activity to get a better return, and it really popped a number, so...
Chris, on that, on what you're looking right there, it's the sales, if you got to, we had a, sales of recyclables?
Yep.
We had a budget of 35, and we had an actual of 41,000?
Yep.
Means we overspent?
No, this is all revenue, so this is...
Oh, okay, it's money that came in, we got more money.
This is more money...
I'm good.
Yeah, more money than we expected, or budgeted for, we, we lowball these, because we don't wanna...
Go over.
We don't, we don't wanna miss and, you know, accidentally dip into the fund balance or something, so, nor, nor do we wanna promise revenue that may not materialize, so we always are conservative, particularly on the, on the bigger items. Some of them, you just never know, but, uh, so you see, we, we're, we're at 41 in 2019, we're gonna leave that estimate at 35 for 2020, at the last column there.
Yep.
The second-to-last nine, rental of town buildings, you see that number jump, that's a full year of lease revenue for the cell tower on the Route 4 property, remember, we, we kinda took over and re-upped that lease last year, we went through all that, so it's a full year of that at the higher rent. Those are the, those are the big changers. The interest, the first gray section, you'll see that we put in a number of, a guess of 65,000 for last year and actually took in 134. That is a really hard number to project because it's driven by how much is outstanding, how far back in the future, and there are now different interest rates, and we never know when people are gonna decide to get caught up on their taxes, so we continually kinda lowball that revenue guess, just because we don't wanna depend on it, we don't know, we don't know what's gonna happen there. So we, I've always left it pretty low. In general, our unpaid tax numbers are pretty stable, so this number should be stable, but it doesn't end up working that way, it just never plays out that way. I've never found a way to predict it better than that, but overall, these are pretty conservative, and they're still up by 150,000, so that really takes the, some of the sting out of the operating budget increase, if you go back to the very last page, which looks like this, this is the whole warrant that we see today, very, very back of the stapled package. That totals up all the things that have a tax impact, the operating budget, as well as all the warrant articles that we are kicking around right now. So if you take the reduced cost of the warrant articles, the increased cost of the operating budget, and the increased revenue, add them all together, we're expecting a tax burden increase at this point with this draft, it's something in the neighborhood of 3/4 of 1%, something like that. We're not done, but that's the neighborhood that we're in with this operating budget and this warrant, if we, you know, we add to it, then that number will get bigger, but that's the neighborhood we're in. The one, the last unknown that I wanted to bring back to you, we had it plugged in as a, in an earlier draft as a question mark, we had it in last year's budget, that's the kitchen for this building. We wanted to do that this year, didn't do it this year, we've been around and around on that. Is that something you wanna revisit and think about putting back in for 2020 and try again to get that done? We did a quickie estimate last year at 17,000, if we were gonna put it back in, I think I, I would put a little more energy into an exact number, but something in that range, probably. That's the only kind of unknown that I have, and anything else you wanna throw in the mix, either to take in or, take out or put in? We've got a couple meetings left before this has to be finalized.
Any questions for Chris on that?
Did they give you any good suggestions at the Budget Meeting?
A couple questions, I wouldn't call anything a suggestion. They're gonna go, we're gonna go back with the Public Works Director in a couple weeks, and they're gonna meet him and, you know, get an update from him, talk through that thing, but they weren't interested in any other department heads or anything like that, so I think they're satisfied.
Did you ever talk with Mr. McLean about the cameras around the...
That's, that's one we could, let's, uh, let's dig that one up again. Yep, we did a long time ago, but haven't gone back to it. That could be a good one to think about again.
Security cameras for the road shed, for the, the highway shed. Thank you. Yeah, the highway building? Yeah. Yeah, I can resource all that.
I've got what you're saying.
Material, give you, the, the products have changed, so it'll give you an idea of what you should be looking for, for numbers.
Okay.
A little bit of background intelligence on that stuff. All right, no other questions on the budget?
No.
Okay. All right, and now...
Get everybody back, though, we can talk about the kitchen.
Do you want, do you want me to dig into that, you wanna keep that alive?
Dig into that, and if, and we get everybody together.
Yeah, I mean, we were generally in agreement before, but maybe it's, it's worth revisiting, but yeah, that, you know, the compelling argument there was that that's one of the public faces of the town is by way of the facilities that we offer, so...
Yeah, we had, when, when we had a 8% increase and no sign of new revenue, it was easy to take that out, but we're in a, in a little bit better place than...
Yeah.
Probably were six weeks ago, so...
Okay. Anything else? Nope? All right, we have an impact fee request.
Yeah, this, you talked to the school board about this early December, and kinda put it aside while you were talking with them, I did not get a sense of what direction you wanted to go in, I had laid out some history on that and some potential legal questions, but did not know if you wanted us to put a lot of energy into it, or where you were, where you were leaning. We just never looped back on it in the chaos of year-end, so I just need some guidance from you on where you wanna go, do you wanna, do you wanna tackle this with what you have? Do you wanna...
How much time do we have? How much time do they have?
They, they need to know for their, I, they haven't said this, but they must need to know for their deliberative session and their meetings, what their revenue streams are for that project, they, they must need to have that information before then, so they know what to ask for and the story to tell, because this is a part of their year-one plan for the building project.
And this is like last, like the previous request is for the assessments, the, the study?
The, the request from them is preliminary expenses, including architect and engineering fees for plans to expand the capacity of the school.
Gotcha. Is this something that we can decide when the full board is here, next time, or are we too short on time for that?
They, I don't know what their calendar looks like, where are we? Yeah, I, I'm guessing, but I, I think you probably can, but I would not wait any longer than that.
Okay.
For their sake.
Yeah. I mean, I personally don't have any problem with it, but I can see the same questions arising this time as to the suitability of using the fees for that. Because the question is always gonna remain, is this, is it driven by new development or not? You know what I mean? So that's what makes it sticky.
I don't think, I mean, I have, it's their money. Put up for this reason.
Yeah.
This is the same discussion we had last time here, we discussed it, so I stick with the same as I did before, it's, the money's there for it. You know, if, if they're gonna go ahead with this plan, they need to get this part done, this is like the, without this, they can't do anything, so...
Yeah, well, I mean, it would, it was that, you know, the architectural and engineering would, would simply be paid for out of the regular project budget, but that just, that's just, like you said, that means that's that much more that they've got to, to budget for that, so... Well, do you guys have any problem waiting for our next meeting when everyone's here?
I have no problem waiting, I have no problem voting for it now, because again, I'm, I'm for it, so however you feel more comfortable is, you're the, it's your call. But if you want the other opinions, that's...
What do you think, Tyler? All right. Let's put on the agenda for next meeting, and we'll have a, we'll get a decision on that.
Do you want me to get our attorney to review it and all that, or do you, do you wanna not put that mention to it, I don't know what you're...
I'd be, I'd be comfortable with, with a, with an eyeball on that.
See the last one, which is very similar, do you, you know? I just need you to tell me how much work to put into it, that's all.
Yeah.
I don't wanna waste everybody's time and money if, you know...
Not true.
But if you don't, but I think they're fair questions.
It's almost an identical request to before, so if you've still got the previous opinion on that, that, that should be fine.
Okay.
So... And yeah, just mail it out to the board, sorta, sorta as a refresher, and then we'll, our goal, our goal will be to have... then we'll, our goal, our goal will be to have the final decision at, at our next meeting. All right. Anything else on that? Any other questions? No? Okay. All right, it is just past seven o'clock, and we have one appointment with John Terninko. Come on down.
Hi, I'm John Terninko. I have a couple of handouts. I don't expect to go through all the pages, because there's only four, but I'd like to pass them out so that you can come on. I have enough for you guys, and how many more would you like?
Uh, just, just the four of us, and I'll scan it and get it to the folks that aren't here.
Thank you, John.
The next, the single page is where I'm going to start.
Got you.
In a moment, you're going to select about six lines on a second.
Thanks.
Step here.
I gave you that, okay.
Thanks.
I didn't treat the other guys.
Okay.
I should have come here a month ago, but for some reason, just a couple of days ago, I realized that we needed to communicate what we consider critical for the safety of the citizens of the town of Nottingham. So the single page, these are the super funds in the state of New Hampshire. And if you go down the list, you'll see that the county of Knock, Nottingham, Rockingham, there are nine locations where there's super fund sites in Rockingham County. And I want to talk about one site that's not in Rockingham County, because I have data on these others, other sites, and that's Carroll County. And the thicker document is where I want to talk about Carroll County. So the first sentence, Portsmouth, the State Department of Health and Human Services confirmed in February 2016 that it had identified a cancer cluster on the seacoast involving two rare pediatric cancers. Now, they're really rare, and what's really interesting is that if you look at Coakley landfill, it's surrounded by about five towns, and the kids that contract that this cancer are scattered around one in each one of the towns. And when this document was created, they were all alive. There's now two who are already dead. And there's a variety of other cancers in that region. And so, second paragraph. May 2017, state pediologist Benjamin Chan acknowledged that there were seven brain or central nervous system pediatric cancers detected in the towns of Rye, Newcastle, Portsmouth, Greenland, and Northampton. So those towns surround the Coakley landfill during a period when they expected to see 3.1. So it's twice as much, and you know, you don't always get whatever you expect to get with probabilities. But the reality is, not only are those cancers, there's a bunch of other cancers associated with that same region that adults have. He determined this did not represent another cancer cluster because the cancers were different types of brain cancers. So that's not even a cluster of a particular type. Next, next one line sentence, "At the same time DHS officials said that they didn't find any common exposure linking the cancers, which have already killed several seacoast children." When this was written, it was only talking about the seven, and two of those are gone. Jump down to a paragraph that starts with the task, that's two-thirds down. "The task force's work led to concerns being raised about contamination leaching from Coakley landfill, a 27, 27 acre superfund cleanup site in Northampton and Greenland." Now, what's really interesting about this is the hazardous waste site, Coakley, allowed the sack base to dump stuff there, but they weren't going to dump it and tell them what they were dumping. So whatever the sack base was presenting into the ground, they have no idea. However, the firefighting equipment is really heavy chemicals, and so now, because of the fires they've had over the airbase, groundwater, one of the largest aquifers, is now contaminated. And two years ago, they started trying to research to find out who all the residents, the enlisted people who are living on base, how they're doing. I have no data about what they found. Two paragraphs below, "State Representative Mindy Mesner, Democrat Rye, who chaired the Subcommittee on the Landfill, noted during a recent interview that the landfill lies geographically smack dab in the middle of this cancer cluster." So right now, there's no documentation that it's coming from Coakley, but it sure is suspicious. And there's one, or there's, I got a couple of things on the second page that I forgot about. First line, DHS officials in 2016 determined there was a small cluster of, I can't even pronounce it, or RMS, which several area children have died from. Next line, "While looking at the RMS cases, the state has identified a small excess of pediatric lung cancer cases, all of which were of a single rare type called whatever." Then at the bottom, just below the adult rate RMS, Mesmer said she learned about four cases of adult RMS, so not only kids, adults. That's highly unusual that adults, adults get this. Okay. This is why last March, we introduced an ordinance to not allow hazardous waste And Red Tweed is wanting the town to forget about what was passed. And I know you're not going to make a decision on this right now, and I know this conversation is okay until midnight. I should have had this conversation a month ago, and I'm not sure what we could do, but I don't understand why anybody, even the free staters, if they want to have a safe place to live, would be fighting an ordinance that prevents these horrible things happening to the community.
Yeah, I'm Peter White with the Nottingham Water Alliance, and we were just wondering what the town of Nottingham was doing to defend this ordinance.
Well, it's an active, actively open case right now, so we can't, we can't talk about pending litigation. No, that...
Tonight's the deadline, and it's our understanding the town has filed no defense. Is that true?
Tonight's, tonight's the deadline for the plaintiff to file his, what's the, motions for summary judgment. It's the plaintiff's deadline tonight. That, that deadline's been expended a few times at their request. We will then respond to it, may respond to it after that, but we, we have no deadline looming.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
So we wait for the plaintiff to leave more filing before the town will make any...
There's nothing that the town is expected to do right now. If, if the town wants to respond to the next motion that comes through, then it, then it will. This is scheduled for trial at some point by default.
This summer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a little early in the, still early in the process.
Well, we might learn how to fight it.
What's that?
I'm saying, between now and then, we might develop some skills on how to play the battle game with lawyers.
Yeah. We're just hoping the town will defend this ordinance that was passed after a couple years of struggle and also to defend our, our water, protect against hazardous waste zones.
I don't understand why anybody would want to allow a hazardous waste site to come to town, particularly with this list from Rockingham County. And I don't know if you've paid attention, but the landfill in Dover, they keep on warning people further and further away that the water's going to be not good.
I think it was part of, again, I can't speak because it was a while ago from last time, but recall those other parts of that ordinance which people objected to. It wasn't just the superfight, the superfund sites.
That were passed?
Yeah. On that whole thing. It was a bunch of...
It's only two and a half pages.
Okay, yeah, okay. But there's other things on there which I think were being discussed. But I mean, I'm supportive of you guys, so.
I think there was some legal justifications in the ordinance that some people didn't understand. When people don't understand it, they tend to be, you know, powerful, but you have to justify it based on the New Hampshire and US Constitution, which our ordinance is based on.
I would say though, that like at P's Air Base, I was in the Marines, and I was on Camp Lejeune, and about every three months, I get a, some sort of something from the VA saying the water was contaminated with everything. Number one being was all the dry cleaning services, which P's had dry cleaners all over. And I know quite a few of my friends that are dealing with the cancer now, so.
This is just a list of superfund sites. There's over 800 sites in New Hampshire contamination, groundwater contamination, I think, including a couple in Nottingham. And this is where the state regulators overseeing things, so once again, who regulates the regulators? That's why it's important for the town to have community rights to make sure we in Nottingham can protect our water and the safety of our community.
Is there any comprehensive list, Nottingham specific, of where all of our contamination sites are, whether it's low level, high level, what have you? Just so that, just for the benefit of people in town, so that they know where the risk areas are?
Well, I only remember one conversation at the town meeting where, might not have been at the town meeting, but one fellow was finding his groundwater was contaminated. And he didn't see any reason why the contamination was on his property, so he walked over, and sure enough, on the other side of the boundary line to his property were two 55-gallon drums loaded with unbelievable stuff. And so, how many of those are around Nottingham?
I hope the town would be studying these, these sites where the old landfills were and doing, you know, test wells and things, test pits, like, you know, you wouldn't be staying on top of it. I mean, town has the resources to do that.
We are on top of the one that's, I mean, the state's testing it out there.
Yeah.
We, we just mentioned it as part of the budget.
Yeah.
As far as we know right now, this is, as far as we know, the biggest polluter in the town of Nottingham, particularly around PFAS, is the town of Nottingham. That's, that's the biggest thing we've got going that we know of right now. There's one, I think there's one, maybe two MTBE sites, one of them being the old, well, I mean, those are, those are getting old now. I don't know what the testing regimen is for those. We certainly have nothing on the superfund level that we're aware of.
Not yet. I say, and also prevention's worth a lot more than a pound of cure. That's what this ordinance does, it prevents that and that kind of problem.
Will we know the plaintiff's thing by next meeting?
It was due today, so we'll, we thought it might come in today, probably tomorrow, by the time it gets through the court system and everything.
And if he doesn't file, then it just follows the pocket schedule for, for the summer hearing?
I don't, the process, I don't know. I, I think that it's, it's got to come in, or there's consequences for the plaintiff.
I don't know if the town can file a motion to dismiss based on, you know, no, no case. I mean, a plaintiff has an online business. How is he even affected by our ordinance? So we can file a motion to dismiss?
Yeah. Those are, yeah, matters of legal strategy that we can't comment on, so.
Yeah, we're just appreciating that as a priority.
Well, it sounds like you guys are concerned also.
Oh, yeah. I, I grew up just down the road from the, the Tollin Road landfill in Dover.
Explains a few things.
Yeah. You weren't very far from me.
I was on the same road.
Yeah. And then, yeah, my whole time in Iraq, I was surrounded by burn pits. I'm surprised I'm not dead yet, honestly.
It's, it's good to hear.
Good news will be there, but that's another discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we maybe clarify, apparently there's been some litigation against the town. Would you explain that?
It, with, just a lot of litigation against the town. So with respect to the ordinance? So, yeah, so in a nutshell, yes, a town meeting, our, town meeting passed a rights-based ordinance for Nottingham, which is, targeted the protection of our groundwater and our, and our natural environment. And, and there are a lawsuit followed shortly after by some people that felt it was a violation of their individual rights. You know, maybe in the semantics of the wording of the law, I, I don't know. I haven't read the full, you know, the full complaint, but that's basically where it's being challenged, as a, as a violation of individual liberties, as I understand it. Was that...
That's a fair...
Fair assessment.
Last time we saw this was probably six months ago, right?
Yeah, it's, the plaintiff's has asked for more than one extension on this stage in the game. It's, it's not moving forward.
Sorry about not being totally right on top of our radar, because we haven't seen it six months.
Because they had a whole bunch of things they were complaining about, the phraseology of the whole document, and they reduced it down to about one page.
Thank you.
Yeah. Actually, yeah, come on up and identify yourself for the...
Good evening. My name is Bill Shimoney. I lived in the town of Nottingham and a half for a few years. I just have a couple of comments, and I'm kind of in the dark, as many people are. And I know with regards to legal issues, when I was in human resources for 35 years, you couldn't talk about it. The lawyer talked, and the other lawyer talked, and they talked together. Unless you were behind closed doors, you just didn't discuss those things because you would prejudice something or give the other side something else. So I understand your position... So I understand your position from that standpoint, although I'm not an attorney. I also understand what summary judgment means, and that's what I think I heard they're looking for, that being just throw out, summary judgment, doesn't apply, no good. I also understand that in order to have a suit like this, you have to prove you've been damaged. I mean, it's kind of like when you file an grievance and you're in a union, you have to prove what you lost. I don't know if anything has even been looked at that, but to me, I know you've got a hard job, we've got a conundrum that we don't understand, I'm not a water doctor, I just know that, you know, in my family, and almost everybody's family, somebody has been lost to cancer. I think what we have here are maybe three economic issues, oh, three issues, two of which are economic. The first one is the obvious, you know, if I could go back and warn my aunt who lived in Woburn, right near WY Grace, who repeatedly for decades said, no, we're not, no contamination, no contamination, only to be found that they hid things that they knew about. A lot of lives lost, and money never buys the life back, the person that you lost. It's really sad, but we can't go back in time. The people in Merrimack can't go back in time, and when St. Cabane was starting to use their slippery chemicals, no one knew that these, well, maybe some people knew, maybe some lab scientists knew, but they didn't know. And if they could enact an RBO like we have to prevent their wells from being dirty, contaminated, I'm sure that they would, I'm sure most of them would, although, you know, who knows? You can't read in a person's heart or mind. I know that what we tried to do, and I was part of the NWA at that point, I was a member of NWA, proud to be a member of NWA for several years. What we were trying to do, knowing that, gee, you've got these cancer clusters, by the way, pediatric cancer's only one thing, breast cancer, we're number two in the country, number two. It's not, you don't want to be number two, you don't even want to be in the top 50, but we're number two. So we've got some problems, but Nottingham, and the reason that my wife and I chose to live here, and hopefully spend the rest of our lives, was that Nottingham is a clean place, there wasn't a lot of manufacturing going on. Most people know that when you pour something into water, it disperses, and some things disperse a lot quicker than others, and these, these PFAS are the biggest slippery things in the world. So to prevent that from happening any further, when you look around Nottingham, we're full of rivers, we're full of underground aquifers. And if any chemical comes in that's not already here, it's going to add havoc and problems, maybe death, maybe death to your animals. That's number one. Number two, the economic issues that if you lived in Merrimack and you wanted to sell your house, because my goodness, I just retired, I just retired, as a matter of fact, if I wanted to sell my house and I lived in Merrimack and I had dirty water, my $200,000, $400,000 house would be worth nothing. There'd be no takers, they wouldn't want it, they wouldn't want the liability. So one of the legs of my stool for retirement would be my house that I would be getting rid of, because I don't need 46,000 square feet anymore. My kids are gone, it's me and my wife, we're rambling around like most people our age, trying to get rid of the house. Social Security's one leg, savings is another, but your house is the biggie, pot of gold, right? Now it's worthless, worthless. So how many people in Nottingham would want to jeopardize the health of their family, their animals, and their property value? I'm not sure how many billionaires we have living in Nottingham that it doesn't matter about the house's value. I'm not sure anybody would say, eh, it doesn't matter what my house is worth, I'm just gonna, I'll probably leave it anyway. Maybe I'll give it to the town and they can use it to practice putting on fires. So all that makes sense to me, but you know, I'm not a water doctor, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just a concerned citizen. I think the third thing is that my understanding, alright, so SALDEF helped us write this, and they're environmental attorneys. And my understanding is that they would be free, or pretty much free lawyers. And I know our town attorney, you have to pay him, we, everybody here has to pay into the budget, and that budget has a line item, legal fees. And I understand the reluctance of incurring further and further costs, but I would suggest I would appeal and I would request respectfully that NWA be invited in to think and have a dialogue about this. I'm not talking about me, I'm not on NWA anymore, but I know these are good people who have the best intentions, the best heart with regards to this. And if you invite NWA in, they can ask SALDEF and get this free legal, yeah, gee, we, we didn't put paragraph star, but we didn't put a semicolon where we should have put a colon. Oh yeah, we should strike that out and find out. Because I don't know anybody who would say, I'm all for death to all the people in my family, and all my animals, and for my value to be worthless. I don't think anybody's all, all for that, even partly so. But maybe we need to avoid some costs and get the help that was explained to me as a late person, and see if that helps diminish the impact of this lawsuit. I would think it would be a nuisance lawsuit, and the last thing in the world you want to do is say, oh yeah, I'm caving into the nuisance lawsuit, or maybe it's for making a political point. Whatever its purpose, doesn't really matter. I think what matters are those three particular aspects. I thank you for my time and for you to open your meeting up, I know how much stuff you've got on your plates. Thank you.
Actually, I'm gonna, just to, no, not, not a question, I just wanted to answer a couple of your points. If memory serves, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think SALDEF actually tried to intervene in the case on our behalf and was denied by the court. So I think the door's already been slammed in their face. I don't know if that's a permanent thing.
It was, it was on their own behalf, or on behalf of the, it was, I, I think its language was, it was, it was asking to intervene on behalf of the citizenry, not on the town's, the town as a corporation's behalf, but on behalf of the citizenry. That, their, their request to intervene-
Right.
-was denied. It may come back, I don't know, but-
I need like a clarification.
Okay.
It's not clear how-
It's a, yeah, that's fine. SALDEF provides these kinds of services all around the world, but they also need money to survive. So I would not guarantee that it would cost absolutely nothing to have their help.
But they would do the best they can.
Yeah. Come on up.
Thank you. I'm Bill Mills. And I have been working with the Nottingham Water Alliance for the last 12 years, and with SALDEF. And the, and I had talked to somebody recently from that organization. SALDEF would represent us pro se, excuse me, it's my turn, they would represent us. The thing that they would ask from us is that we pay their expenses, their air hotel expense, their car rental, or court fees, that's what we would have to pay. And they are willing to contract with the town to represent us in this. And I think this is something that the people in this town need, they need to be protected. As I think somebody so well put it, when it's too late, it's too late. We've got to stop now.
Do we have people doing this right now? I mean, people dumping shit into our water?
We're not aware of anything.
I mean, I, I mean, if they are, I mean, they've been doing it for years, there's no doubt.
Yeah, no, I mean, we, if we were aware of anything, we'd be, you know, we'd be calling DES in and throwing all our enforcement-
I would say one of the worst things I see, we have livestock and stuff like that around waterways, or whatever, that's one of the worst things that could possibly happen. I mean, I don't think we do anything about that right now, do we?
You can't.
Huh?
The farmers are protected.
Oh, I know, well, I mean, I know, but if you look over in Europe, and Ireland, and England, places like that, they completely change the way they farm. They don't have the, I don't know if anybody in the town of Nottingham that I know would welcome in somebody, say, what are you gonna do? Well, we're gonna dump nuclear waste into the North River. I don't think anybody in their right mind, in any of the boards or committees that we have, would welcome business in like that either, I don't believe it. I don't know, I mean, if-
I don't think that we would have believed that anybody would come into town either.
I think this, I think the, the individual, the individual that is, or individuals that are upset, I think, it's just like anything else, nobody wants to be told what to do. I mean, I don't, I have no idea who we, I don't even know him, or he or she, but I would say us as a, we're not inviting these types of businesses. We don't have much business in Nottingham as it is, but what, again, nothing's worth bringing in somebody that's gonna pollute our waterways.
As I said, I'd normally expect somebody to come in and want to pump out gallons, thousands of gallons of water per day either.
Right, well that-
And be adding to an ordinance to protect ourselves.
Yeah.
And that's part of living in a community, is working with other members of the community. And sometimes there is, you have to drive on one specific side of the road, you can't drive on whichever one you want. You have to do what is best for the community-
Right, absolutely.
...to make the community win.
I look at the whole, again, the water thing, I don't even get, so that's gone, it's behind us now. But somebody convinced that company to come into town, and they came in with good intentions, and guess what? The best thing is we put them out of business, right?
You know what?
Completely put them out of business, and you guys, you guys did a great job. And I know people in Massachusetts that came up to help, so that's what I'm saying, it happened, but somebody convinced them, it was okay, we want you to come to Nottingham, and I look at it as, we, we played a part in that, somebody, I don't know who, but whoever was in charge at that time invited them into town and said, this'd be a great idea, tax revenue and this and that, so. But we, you guys, you guys stood tall, and guess what? That, those people involved in that, their lives have changed forever, I would say, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
They've got three months to buy it back yet.
Yeah.
Oh, we don't. They've had 15 years to buy it back, I don't think it's gonna happen at this point.
Hi, do you have a daddy? I live on State Road in Nottingham. I was part of this whole thing very beginning with USA Springs, and the reason that we took the action that we did with USA Springs is we were being reactive, because we found out that DES was not our friend. DES gave them a permit, even though all the science told DES that it was not our work, it was going to be detrimental to the aquifer, yet DES went ahead and gave them a permit. And when we went to court, we were told by the courts that we, the people of Nottingham, had no standing. So the reason that we took this action is to be proactive, because we could see by what was happening in P's, and what the Harlem property had actually done, even though DES wouldn't listen to me. I told them before they did the pump test, go to Harlem's, I'll show you where to dig, I made them a map, told them where to dig, use your metal detector, you'll find machines buried just below the surface. They didn't do it. So what happened, when the pump test happened, all that pollution that was lying there, sort of dormant, or semi-dormant, was pulled into the aquifer, and now we get a big mess. And to this day, I don't know, the state actually let the fox guard the hen house. They allowed USA Springs to do their testing to verify that, that they had cleaned up all the pollution. I still don't know if they have. And unless anybody's done an independent study, we still don't know if that pollution is still there dormant, and if there's any kind of a recall on, on the aquifer, it could bring even more pollution in. Anyway, the bottom line is that we took a proactive approach, because we know the state is not going to help us, and with the federal government the way it is now, the federal government is not going to help us either. In fact, they're, they're dismantling a lot of the pollution protections that we've had. So it's up to us, the little town of Nottingham, and you, you guys, and God bless you for doing what you're doing, to protect us, and it's your duty to protect us. We're the citizens that, that try to put the information in front of you, and the, the weapon to use against pollution. And what I don't understand is that anybody's business, if it depends on his ability or her ability to pollute, put toxic waste into the ground, we don't want that anyway. So that's what this ordinance is all about. It might be a little more complex than it needs to be, but the bottom line is, we have to have something in place, because the feds are not going to help us, and the state's not going to help us. So I'm hoping that, that you can do what needs to be done to protect us from any kind of toxic dump, because we've had enough already. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to come on?
Sure, come on up.
It's not eight o'clock yet.
Huh?
Eight o'clock, shut it down. I wouldn't have sat there.
Hi. I will belabor this. My name is Charlotte Seif, I live over on Hagerfield Road, and I'm here tonight, I haven't been involved in the past battles. I'm relatively new resident here, been here four years, and I moved here because of the beauty of the environment, because my house is surrounded by acres and acres and acres of beautiful, what I hope is pristine forest, who knows what goes on there. And one of the reasons I supported this ordinance and voted for it, and it still kind of boggles my mind that we could vote for this ordinance, and one person could sort of hold us captive. I, I mean, I understand that democracy, you should question, and, and everybody has a chance to answer, but it just seems like a no-brainer to me. And what particularly concerns me is not the drama of the superfunds, but the little dramas of all the land that's around me that's owned by individuals. I don't know what they're doing with their land. I don't know if they've made arrangements to have some septic sludge spread there to make a few extra bucks. I know there's an awful lot of farmland here in Nottingham that people own and can barely pay their taxes on, as they're getting older, I know it's being subdivided, I know families are moving in, and it's all good, it's progress, it's fine, but I am concerned about individuals that can use their property or sell the use of their property. And indeed, I think, like, you know, sewage sludge is very commonly spread over fields and forests. And I'm not sure that there's any other regulation other than that you can approach someone who's got a lot of land and say, wouldn't, you know, hey, how about if I give you 10,000 bucks and we'll spread this here? I think that's probably something that we could all relate to. I don't know about contaminants from, you know, somebody's got their own little local garage or something, but I do know it's obfuscation for people to say, well, I'm worried that if I'm using Roundup, my neighbor can come over and tell me I can't use Roundup. It's ridiculous. What we're looking at is large-scale contaminants that would go into our aquifer, and if our wells are contaminated, as this other gentleman pointed out, our homes are worth nothing. And this has happened everywhere, not just in superfund locations. I'm concerned about the health and well-being of myself and my grandchildren. I have young friends here today who have bought homes here recently and have young children. I can see, you know, you're interested in the school, you're interested in young families coming in here, you're interested in the community, you've dedicated so much of your time to help this town, and I'm really asking you to step up to the plate for us, because I think, I could be wrong, but I think everybody here tonight is here for the same reason, to ask you to really take this seriously, and to not buy into those arguments of, well, I don't want my neighbor telling me that I can't use Roundup. It's, it's a silly obfuscation of what's really a very, very big problem. I don't know if we ever have terrible clusters of cancer here. Obviously, we don't have the type of pollution a P's has, or Otis Air Force Base, or Camp Lejeune has, but I do know that there's creeping pollution everywhere, and I really ask you as a concerned citizen to, to stand up and defend us. It's worth spending time and money on, and I think everybody here would be happy to help, and I know there are a lot of people who didn't make it here tonight, too, who feel this is a really important issue. So thank you so much.
I heard what you guys said, but what I don't know is, what's the process that's gonna happen between now and whenever? And I don't know whether that means, you have no idea, because you don't know what the lawyers are gonna say.
I would expect the process will be, we'll get the motion for summary judgment, the board will discuss how- The board will discuss with counsel what their options are in terms of how to respond to it, and go from there. Like, that's, and that is imminent. I don't know how much time we'll have to respond to that motion, at least a month, I would think.
But in terms of your individual comments this evening, it sounds like you're not too keen on what's happened, or what's happened with this lawsuit.
I don't, what do you mean?
I thought I heard you three in particular saying, you're not keen on having and having this waste out of town.
Okay, right, in support.
No, no, I mean, we completely get the seriousness of this, and we're with you. We don't want this toxic garbage in our town either, but, you know, it's, this is a long, slow fight. And just like you, we have to be patient with it as well. And let the, what's the word, the machinations of the court, you know, move forward as pitifully slow as they may be. So we're beholden to that, just like everyone else in town, but.
Let me see what you can't say. What the board has to weigh in their role as the board are, what are the potential outcomes of all the court actions? What's the, what's the, what's the value of winning, what's the cost of losing? What's the, you know, those are the kinds of things that they're going to weigh in the context of a single lawsuit. They're, to get from, if we aren't successful in this particular lawsuit, to there's going to be people dumping poison in the ground here the following week, is a bit of a stretch. So they have to weigh the value of winning on this particular case against the costs and the risks of losing. That's what they're going to be juggling. Not, the question is not, do we want pollution or not? That's not, that's not the question that they're dealing with. They're dealing with one specific lawsuit, and that's what they've got to deal with in the short term. Does that make sense?
Yeah. You know, another interesting thing to point out, too, is that, you know, since, since the ordinance was passed, and since this lawsuit was filed, we've actually had zero opportunity to leverage that law. We haven't had the need to stop anyone from violating that law. And the interesting point that follows from that is, if there's no harm to anyone, how is there even standing for a lawsuit? That's, in my layman's understanding of the law, you gotta, you gotta be able to prove harm to have standing to bring a suit like that. Nobody's been harmed, so, but that's, that's one of those things where I leave that to the lawyer.
It is very nice to see all you guys here tonight, in support of this. You know, it does show us where, you know, we should be concentrating, if, you know, you've got this many people here about this issue tonight. You know, when we look at it again, as the way Chris determines, that will go unnoticed, you know?
Yeah.
It's worth the money.
It's worth any price to protect the people of Nottingham.
Well, it's, you know, it's people like you that will take a stand and step forward, and, you know, I always say, the hardest thing to do is the right thing to do, especially when not everybody wants to do it, right? But it's the people that take a stand in the face of those adversities that show where the heart of the town is. So we applaud that, we applaud you.
Anthony, you don't have to wait until somebody's harmed. That's why you prevent it from happening, by enacting ordinances.
Yeah, no, my, what my point was about was that nobody has been harmed by the law.
That's correct. However, this person's attempting to overturn the law, he has not been harmed, but he doesn't have to be harmed. He can still say that the law, for some reason, in his opinion, is not correct, then the courts will decide. However, it's still the onus on the town to defend the ordinance that they enacted.
I think we ought to go.
What's that?
I think we ought to go.
Take a motion.
Thank you for the show.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming. All right, that's also the end of our agenda, so if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion.
You want to just, he has another question, about something else, new business.
What was it?
Romeo has a question about new business.
Oh.
Do you want to let these guys clear out, just hear them one second, what he has to say?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Romeo, just let the people leave, just, that's exactly right, let them leave, so we can hear you.
Order in the court.
Guys, we still have a meeting going.
We already know what he's going to ask us. Folks, we still have a meeting going, so if you're, if you're all done, please take your conversations in the hallway. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Romeo.
Hi, my name is Romeo Dunay, I live on Ledge Farm Road. Over the past year and a half or so, I've spoken with, excuse me, Romeo, one second.
Peter, can you take that out in the hallway, please? That's all right.
Thank you.
Over about the past year and a half, I've spoken with Chris Sturndale about the status of the USA Springs property. Chris has always said, well, we don't know what we're going to do with it. We'll wait, and wait, and wait, and I finally said, well, enough talking. I wrote an offer for the purchase in the property, and I presented it to you last year. But I haven't heard, oh, it's a great idea, let's sell it to them. Nope, let's reject it, or let's counteroffer it. I've heard nothing from you. What's the status?
So didn't we just talk about this a few weeks ago, last time you came?
Well, it was last year.
Yeah.
This is a new year.
Yeah, yeah, it is a new year, it is. Yeah, no, we, it's the same thing as before, we're looking at a number of options for the property.
You mind telling me what the options are?
Not all of them can be discussed publicly, no, not yet. But we are not in a position to make a final decision on any one of them yet.
Do you want to reject my offer?
If somebody gets sold.
Or counteroffer the offer?
Person fell down the road.
I, what's that? You got it? Okay. No, I mean, we can't make.
We neither accepted or denied your offer.
Pardon me?
We've neither accepted or denied your offer.
It's limbo.
Exactly.
We should do something.
Yeah, we should, yes, but, you know, again, we're evaluating a number of options. And we're not, we're not ready to make a decision on any one of them just yet.
Recently, recently, my wife and I flew on a vacation, there were some empty seats on the plane. I know that when that plane took off, those empty seats generated no revenue, and they never will. And I know that property is owned by the community, the town of Nottingham. And every day that it's owned by the town of Nottingham, it doesn't generate any revenue in property taxes.
Legally, we can't, legally, we can't do anything with it until.
That's not correct.
April.
It's not correct.
It is.
I spoke with Jim St. Jean today, and he's the foremost authority on auctioning town-owned properties.
Would you like us to say that we're not going to do anything until April? Would that make it better for you?
No, I don't want you to say anything like that, but you could if you wanted to. However, the fact is, you are legally not bound to not do anything. You could have sold that property, or auctioned it off, or something, within a few days of having acquired it. Yes, it's true that the person who lost the property, or the organization that lost the property, in property tax lien, can redeem it up to three years. That does not preclude you from selling the property, with the understanding that whoever buys it understands that if the person who lost the property wants to redeem it, that they still have the ability of redeeming it. If I bought the property a few days after the town took it, and I started building something on it, my money would be lost. However, if I don't do anything with it, but start going through the mechanizations of planning for it, then that's my own intellectual property that I've put in. Still, I can't be reimbursed from that. But if, what's his name, Rotundo, wanted to redeem, he could redeem. Highly unlikely that Rotundo's going to come in with over a million dollars in cash to buy a property that was on the market for three years. At a million dollars, and no substantial offers came in, close to a million dollars. I doubt that Rotundo's going to come in. I'd almost bet on it, and give you odds. So you're not precluded from selling the property by law in any form. The fact is that Rotundo could come and redeem, that's all. Do I want you to say that you reject the offer? No, I don't want you to say that. I want you to come back and say, we're going to auction it off, or we're going to counteroffer you. Or you're going to accept it.
Yeah, counteroffers, not, we have, again.
But you have to have something.
We listened to what you said before, at the last meeting, we decided to wait, and I'm sorry that you weren't contacted about us waiting.
Well, I haven't been contacted to say that.
I understand that. But, and again, I apologize for that. I did, that we did not make a decision whether to accept or reject your offer at the last meeting. And we haven't went any further on that offer, or that, the information you gave us.
John, I didn't think that you're going to make a decision right then and there, and I even said that at the meeting.
But we still haven't made one.
Well.
I mean, it's time, it's time.
Are you guys going to sit down and think about it, and decide what you want to do?
Absolutely.
Are you going to wait until after April?
I think that was probably going to be the plan, was we were going to wait till after the three months was up.
Why do you want to keep giving up property taxes? We, as a community, pay property taxes. If that property is put back on the tax roll, it starts earning property taxes. Plus, whatever the money is, is back into your bank account. What do you gain by waiting?
Well, I don't know.
There's a, there's a lot, I mean, it all depends on what scenario comes to transpire, but, you know, part of the risk for us is in, you know, selling it outright and losing control of the property, in terms of who ends up in there, and what are they going to do next?
I put that in my offer.
Right, right, but this is, I mean, the, this has been going on far before you made your offer, okay? So, I mean, that's, it's been an ongoing issue for us for the past three years.
When are you going to make a decision?
After April.
We might put it back up on the market. Now that's all cleared up and gone, and there's no things on, it might go back to market. It's a 1.2 million dollar property, you offer $400,000.
Excuse me, it's been listed for over a year at a million dollars, and you receive no offers?
Again, there was obviously this.
Excuse me?
This litigation of the time, the tax, where you could buy, where you could buy it back from the taxes, that was also.
This was before the town seized it. Kane Company out of Portsmouth had that property listed for over three years. It's not a 1.2 million dollar property. That may be what's owed in property taxes, penalties, and fines.
If you go on our website, and you look what Avatar has it assessed for, with the building and the land, it lists out at 1.1 million dollars.
You could assess it at 20 million, doesn't mean it's right.
Again, I'm not doing it, I'm just saying what the information's there. I'm not an assessor.
John.
I'm not here to even argue with you about it, Romeo. If you want to take your offer back, take it back, if you want us to keep it.
You're rebutting my offer by saying it's a 1.2 million dollar property, which it's not.
Well, I'll, I'll be, again, I'll go right on the record right now, and again, this is for me only. I would not vote to accept that offer that you put in, if we were going down to talk about it.
Good.
I'll put that out there for you.
Will you counteroffer it?
Again, we haven't discussed that as a board.
When will you discuss it? What, April? Because of the arbitrary suggestion that you want to wait until the three-year right of recision expires?
It's not arbitrary. I mean, this is, this approach was what the board decided on, based on the history of the property, advice of our council, a variety of sources. So that was the most prudent action we could take to protect the town.
Today I spoke with Jim St. Jean, who's the preeminent auctioneer of town-owned properties through tax liens.
He's guy in Epping, right?
Excuse me?
Is he in Epping?
Yeah, he's right on.
Highway 27.
Excuse me, on Highway 27. He does more of these than everybody else combined. Today he told me, this Saturday, he's auctioning off properties over in the Wakefield area, that were seized only two months ago. In other words, there would be two years and 10 months' right of redemption still on the books. So there's no reason why you need to wait and not get property taxes back into the coffers. Why should we all have to pay more property taxes if this property isn't bringing in its own fair share? What are you doing?
That's one way to look at it.
You're arbitrarily waiting until the three-year right of recision is over.
It's not arbitrary. If you feel it's arbitrary, I'm sorry for that, but it's not arbitrary.
There's no argument there. You can sell it right now if you want, just by auctioning an offer, selling it, or accepting an offer. You've decided to wait until the right of recision period is over. There's no reason for that.
Okay. I appreciate that you feel that way.
It's not that I feel that way, it's the law. It is what it is. You could sell it tomorrow and start earning property taxes, but you're not.
That is correct.
So it's an arbitrary decision to wait?
It's not arbitrary, but the board, for its reasons, has, that I've already explained to you, has decided not to take any action on that property right now.
Good. Anybody else want to say anything? Have a great day, Happy New Year.
Thank you. All right. As that's the end of our agenda, I will take a motion.
We have no one on public.
Unless you want to.
No.
Who's the lady outside?
Emily's is here.
Oh, really?
Well, she's sitting up, I didn't, I didn't get involved with the, with that one. Cops were there first, and, so they got, they're taking care of her. Everybody else is safely loaded in their vehicles.
Got two down out there, or just?
Just one.
Make a motion, we adjourn the meeting? Second.
All in favor? Motion's adjourned.